Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our city council meeting of January 2nd, 2019. The first meeting of the year. And before we start, could I please have Pastor Steve Hammond come forward for the opening prayer?
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for new year, new beginning, and a new chance to celebrate our freedoms as Americans. We thank you for the privilege of coming into this chamber, discussing the business of our city. And we thank you, Lord, that you are with us. And we have hope for the new future, the new year. We have hope that you will bless our city once again, and that we will continue to go forward. We will continue to embrace one another, to get past differences, to work together for the betterment of every citizen. We take a moment to remember and pray for the family of Corporal Singh over in Newman, just a few miles away. We pray for their comfort. We pray for the safety of every law enforcement officer in our city, in our state and nation. We ask your protection upon them. Keep them safe, bring them home to their families. We thank you, God, that we can stand together in times like these and comfort one another. So I pray that you would help us to do better in this next year, to be there for one another. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And if I might, before the meeting starts, if we could have a moment of silence for Corporal Singh of the Newman Police Department. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Flag's... I'd like to call the meeting to order of January 2nd, 2019. And Commander Rayna, would you lead us in the flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three, roll call.
Freya?
Here.
Johnson Santos Jones?
President.
Lewis Valalta?
Here. We do have a quorum. And I hope Mrs. Santos is doing well. She's out sick this evening. So she is excused. Okay, let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis to approve the consent agenda, or the agenda stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Presentation, Los Banjos for a Day, proclamation February 10th, 2019. And I see Mrs. Roloff is here. She could come forward. Well, tonight, we're doing something that we've never done in the history of the city of Los Banos. We're changing the name of the city of Los Banos for one day to Los Banjos. And Los Banjos, it's in honor of a concert that's going to take place on February 10th. Is that correct? Okay. And I'm gonna have, before I read the proclamation, I would like Mrs. Roloff to tell us a little bit about this occasion.
Well, the Los Banos Arts Council decided it was about time to celebrate our town with some appropriate music. And banjo music is usually a happy time, happy songs. And we thought to change the name, we just have to add one letter. So we've got two fantastic groups coming to town to play music for us on a Sunday afternoon.
And they are?
John McEwen, who was founding member of the Nitty Gritty Dirt Band, old timers will remember. He's world famous. He just came out with a new book. You can buy on Amazon. It's got very five-star ratings. It's about his life, the last 50 years doing music. And Evie Leyden from the Bay Area, who's an amazing banjo player. She plays a totally different style of banjo music.
Well, thank you so much. And we're looking forward to this concert. And I hope the attendance is wonderful. And I'd like to read this proclamation, if I might. Proclamation recognizing February 10th, 2019, as Los Banjos for a Day. Whereas music is a universal language that unites all people, even in times of trouble. Joyful music is needed in our lives to remind us of good things we share. The roots of American music are firmly planted in the soil of this great land. And banjo clearly rings out on the sunny side of life in the heart of American traditional music. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby proclaim, the city of Los Banos shall be named Los Banjos for a Day on February 10th, 2019, in conjunction with programs promoted by Cindy Roloff's and the Los Banos Arts Council to celebrate American banjo music and encourage everyone to join in on the celebration of music of our community in the spirit of the "Will the Circle Be Unbroken?" And thank you so much for putting this, this, this event together. And just can't wait to, to hear it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And we will be re-presenting that proclamation at that time on, on that night. Okay? Afternoon. Afternoon. Thank you. Okay. So every year, every day, we have a number of commissions that represent the city of Los Banos. And they help us with the, the daily routines of the city of Los Banos. And in, in many ways, help us to run this city. And we are very, very appreciative of the individuals who have done this over the years. And so tonight is their time to be recognized. And if I could have the people that are here this evening, to please come up from the various commissions, so we can be, so we can recognize you, if you would come forward. Here, come center over here, so we can get in the camera. Okay? So first, we have Mr. Steve Creighton. Mr. Creighton is representing two years on the, the Tree Commission. And Steve is a, I'm not gonna say an old-time local, longtime local. But we are so happy that, that you have done that. And so thank you so much, Steve, for your representation and, and being on the commission. Thank you so much. Next, we have Mr. Palmer McCoy. Palmer McCoy has been on the planning commission for a number of years, and has helped to make important decisions for the planning commission. And the commission, the planning commission helps us to, to, well, they're the first line when a, a new project comes forward and a new subdivision, or any type of business in Los Banos, they're the first line. And they're usually the final line as far as the decisions that are made and how the city of Los Banos looks. So thank you so much, Palmer. Next, we have Gary Minyos. And Gary Minyos is also a school board member. And Mr. Minyos has represented the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is a liaison between the city of Los Banos and the Los Banos Unified School District, that helps us with, with planning of different events and also the running of our parks. So we're looking forward to Tree City again, USA again this year, Gary. Thank you. And we have Mr. David Dees. David Dees has been on the planning commission. And also, as I just said, as I mentioned about Mr. McCoy, the planning commission is, is in valuable service to us. That, that has helped us out over many years. And it's been in existence far, far longer than any council member, or probably anyone in this room has, has known for the, for the amount of time that the planning commission has put in, because it's always been a vital link between the council and the commissions. So thank you so much, David. And thank you all. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Please state your name and city of residence when you approach the podium. I would remind those, if you have a, a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. So is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and bring it back to council level. And we will go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 213975 through 214270 in the amount of $1,109,570.64. Minutes for the December 5th, 2018 city council meeting? Minutes for the December 19th, 2018 city council meeting? Measure P Oversight Committee report? City Council Resolution Number 6034, appointing members to the Measure P Citizens' Oversight Committee as Mark Bodley and Tim McNally, terms expiring December 31st, 2021. City Council Resolution Number 6035, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget by increasing appropriations in the expenditures for landscaping lighting district number 12, Mission Estates, in the amount of $8,000, and landscaping lighting district number 10, Tabit Park, in the amount of $6,000. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion at this time? Not seeing or hearing anyone, can I please have a motion? Ms. Freya?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Jones to approve the consent agenda stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the categorical exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities and conditional use permit to allow the use of a Type 21 alcohol license for the off-sale or general alcohol for Mibario Food and Gas Mart located 403 North Mercy Springs Road, APN 082072024. And item 8A1, City Council Resolution Number 6036, approving conditional use permit number 2018-14 to allow the sale of alcohol under a Type 21 off-sale of general alcohol license for Mibario Food and Gas Mart located at 403 North Mercy Springs Road, APN 082072024. And this is an action, this is a motion, and then an action item. And so we're gonna go to Director Elms for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I have a PowerPoint presentation with this item.
Okay. Let's see here.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we just take a, a two-minute break? Oh, here we go.
There we go.
All right. Okay. All right.
Okay. Then we'll move forward. Okay, so tonight, we're asking the city council to consider a conditional use permit for Mibario Food and Gas Mart, conditional use permit number 2018-14. The proposal consists of a request for a Type 21 alcohol license. This is for the off-sale of general alcohol. They are currently operating and have been with a Type 20 alcohol license, which is just for beer and wine. So they're asking for an intensification in their license type. They will continue to operate seven days a week, Sunday through Thursday from 4:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Friday through Saturday from 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. They are located within the Highway Commercial Zoning District. Their address is 403 North Mercy Springs Road. This is the northwest intersection of Overland and Mercy Springs Road, State Route 165. This was the home for many years, about 30-plus years of a former Circle K, which moved across the street. And then Mr. J. Verk took over the location, and then rehabbed it, expanded the gas, and actually took on mobile gas brand there, and has been operating the convenience store for several years. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility, and the use of this conditional use permit will not expand the floor print of the existing facility. Under the use permit analysis, which is contained within your staff report, our municipal code requires specific findings for conditional use permits. There's general use permit criteria, and then there's specific findings that are made for the on-sale and off-sale of alcoholic beverages, which this item does meet to all of those findings. And ABC, the Alcoholic Beverage Control, under the state of California, is the issuing authority. So this particular project is located, and census tract 22.02. It's up in the northwest quadrant of the city of Los Banos. And currently, there are three off-sale licenses that are currently active. Of one of those active licenses is actually Mibario with their Type 20. And so this particular request would not be adding another license, it would just be intensifying the existing license. This is the existing location of Mibario at 403.
Wait a minute. Did you go off? Try that.
We're on now. We're on now. Okay. So this is the existing location of 403 North Mercy Springs Road. Just a view from the street corner intersection. This is the interior of the store. This is where the alcohol is located, the existing beer and wine location. And public comment, this particular item was published in the Los Banos Enterprise and circulated to the 300-foot radius on December 21st, 2018. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution Number 6036, approving conditional use permit number 2018-14, to allow for the off-sale of alcohol under a Type 21 alcohol license for Mibario Food and Gas Mart located at 403 North Mercy Springs Road. And that concludes my presentation. Mr. J. Verk, the applicant, is here as well to answer any questions.
Go back to this. Good. Okay. Council members, any questions this time before I open up the public hearing? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6036? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And council, are there any questions? Okay. Commander Rayna, just one question, as always, and I ask this question of every applicant, whether it's a, a, an enhancement to the alcohol or not, are you satisfied with the camera system? Hang on just one minute, let me get this. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are. Also reviewed activity over the past 12 months. Nothing appears to be out of the ordinary. The staff, the owner, they're always very cooperative. So no objections.
Fantastic.
Satisfied with the cameras.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Freya?
If there are no other questions, I would move to approve City Council Resolution Number 6036, as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Freya, second by Jones, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6036. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Okay, let's go on to item B, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities, and a conditional use permit to allow the use of a Type 21 alcohol license for the off-sale and general alcohol for Village Liquors located at 2220 East Pacheco Boulevard, Suites D and E, APN 428072024. And item B1, excuse me, 8B1, City Council Resolution Number 6037, approving conditional use permit 2018-03 to allow for the off-sale of general alcohol under a Type 21 alcohol license for Village Liquor located at 2220 East Pacheco Boulevard, Suite D and E, APN 028160029. And we're gonna go back to Mrs. Elms for a, is there a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. One, two, three. All right.
All right. Great. Okay, so this particular proposal is for a transfer of an existing Type 21 alcohol license to a new location that's within the same shopping center. So Village Liquor is currently located within the College Plaza, which is commonly, or most commonly known as the Food for Less Shopping Center. And they're actually on the very east end of the shopping center, and are moving towards the center of the shopping center in a, in an existing building, that is right in between In Shape, which is the gem, and the very long commercial strip, with various multiuses in that commercial strip. This new location is accommodating. The, the property owner is now Mr. Singh, excuse me, Gil, who just purchased this particular property. He was leasing the previous property. So this is an upgrade for Mr. Gil, which we're very excited to accommodate him. This is the location, 2220 East Pacheco Boulevard, again, in the College Plaza Shopping Center. This is, according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility. The use permit analysis, as I previously stated, the municipal code requires findings to be made for any conditional use permit. There's general findings, and then there's specific findings for the on-sale and off-sale of alcohol, which this particular project has met all of those findings. And if you have any questions on any of them, I would be happy to answer them. But if there are no questions, I'll just keep going. And then ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Control, is the issuing authority. So the census tract that this particular project is located is 23.02. Currently, there are six off-sale licenses, but this project would not be adding a new license, in that it's just moving to a new location. ABC allows transfers of licenses. However, because a conditional use permit is a land use entitlement, land use is not transferable. So it requires a new conditional use permit, even though it's in the same shopping center and just moving a couple of buildings down, it's, it runs with the land, it runs with the address, the APN, that particular parcel, that use runs. With the land, it's not transferable. So that's why a conditional use permit, a new conditional use permit is being required.
As is with the old, when they move out, then that runs with the land, and someone would have to reapply for that one, too?
They would. So Mr. Gil is taking his Type 21 with him to his new location. So the, any new person would need to apply for a conditional use permit. But there's a lottery that would need to take place with ABC even before, even contemplating with the city, so that they could even be eligible for a Type 21. Raj, those, that lottery is very difficult, and you need a broker to help you. It's, it's very hard to get a Type 21 license. In Merced County, they don't issue new licenses. So it, this particular, a new use would require a new conditional use permit there. The existing, so this is the new elevations. This is 2220 East Pacheco. Uh, the existing, so this is the new elevations, this is twenty-two twenty East Pacheco Boulevard. And the existing location is, um, twenty-two sixty East Pacheco Boulevard, which is behind the Chevron Gas Station. So this is where it's been operating for the last several years. So public comment, a public hearing notice was, uh, published in the Los Banas Enterprise and mailed to the three-hundred-foot radius on December twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And one comment was received. Um, this was during the public hearing of the planning commission, and this was a comment from, um, In Shape, where they were concerned with the, um, loitering and issuance of alcohol, uh, immediately adjacent to their use. Um, however, staff feels that, uh, mitigation measures have been incorporated in that, uh, Mr. Gil has been operating his existing facility with no issues for the last several years and didn't see any additional conditions needed. Another, um, comment that was brought up by In Shape was that they wanted to restrict the license to be reviewed in a six-month period. Again, the planning commission did not feel that that was necessary as, um, Mr. Gil has an existing business which has been operating, um, under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Banas as well as ABC with no issues. So recommendation, um, with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution number six zero three seven approving conditional use permit number two thousand and eighteen dash thirteen to allow for the off-sale of alcohol under a type twenty-one alcohol license for Village Liquor located at twenty-two twenty East Pacheco Boulevard, suites D and E. And that concludes my presentation. And Mr. Raj Gil is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Council members, any questions of Mr. Gil? Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on city council resolution number six oh three seven? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close, uh, the public hearing and bring it back to council level. And, uh, any questions for, uh, uh, about this, council? Okay. Uh, Commander, again, standard question. Uh, when, when this is, uh, in place, uh, you will, uh, the police department will be re, reviewing and approving the camera system?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. That's my only question. All right. So, um, is there a motion? Mr. Jones? Oh, sorry. Let me get you back here. All right, go ahead.
Um, a motion to approve city council, um, sorry, which one are?
Resolution six oh three seven.
Resolution, uh, number six zero three seven approving conditional use permit number two zero one eight dash one three to allow the off-sale of general alcohol under a type twenty-one alcohol license for Village Liquor located at twenty-two twenty East Pacheco Boulevard, suites, D and E, APN number four two eight dash one six zero dash zero two nine.
Ms. Freya?
I will second that.
Motion by Jones, seconded by Freya to approve city council resolution number six oh three seven as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item nine, Measure H Implementation Plan. And we're gonna go to Public Works Director, uh, Engineer, uh, oh, consideration of approval of city council resolution number six oh three eight approving. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I forget. Take that back. All right. Measure H Implementation Plan. Recommendation, this is an informational item only and we're gonna go, uh, to Director Williams.
I was one ahead.
That's okay. I also have a presentation.
Okay. So you're not alone, Mr. Jones. Okay. All right, good?
Good evening, council. I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are at so far with Measure H and what we will be doing to move forward to ensure that the implementation of this measure is successful. So as you know, um, we began the committee formation with the last council meeting, uh, approved on December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, we, um, approved a resolution to establish the committee. Um, we also, uh, on that same date, uh, authorized the Human Resource Department to put out the applications and begin advertising. The application deadline is due January thirtieth, so the end of this month. Um, we are hoping to appoint the committee at the February twentieth, uh, meeting. Again, that committee's made up of five people. We will be holding interviews for them sometime between the closed date of the January thirtieth and the, the February twentieth meeting. And then we will have an initial meeting with the, um, Measure H Committee to go over what, what's, um, their specific duties are. So the initial meeting for the Measure H Committee, as I stated, will hopefully be sometime in March, as long as we have enough applicants and we get everybody appointed in time. Um, at that meeting, we will be outlining their specific duties, um, which is to review, comment, and recommend the use of Measure H funds to the city council each year prior to the adoption of the budget, review a performance, performance report, which the finance department will put together how much revenue was brought in and how the expenditures were spent, and that, um, will be given to the committee at the end of every year for their review. And then also they will report that back to, there are any findings that they might have, back to the council. Um, the committee is set up to have bi-annual meetings, more if necessary, and they will be, um, the meetings will be held in accordance with the Brown Act. Also at the meeting, the initial meeting, we'll be discussing, um, putting together the expenditure plan. This plan will be put together by staff, but we will go over with the committee the, the community survey that we did prior to, um, the measure passing, council spending priorities that we worked on throughout the whole, um, process of passing this measure. And then the departments will also give presentations. So for instance, the police department, fire department, public works will give presentations on how they see the funding being spent in each department. The, so the next steps after we get that committee together, um, we will bring together the, the, uh, city attorney is putting together an agreement with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, previously known as the Board of Equalization. That agreement will be brought to you hopefully sometime in February. Um, once we give that agreement to the CDTFA, they'll be able to start collection of the tax. And the, the goal is to have that collection begin on April first, two thousand and nineteen. Staff, um, will be working on developing the expenditure plan. As I previously mentioned, this will work in conjunction with the budget and that will happen January through May. Like I said, we'll also be preparing the budget at the same time, um, February through June. We'll have a meeting in May, um, a budget workshop. We'll also be talking about Measure H at that time and then hopefully adopting the budget sometime in June. And in May with our budget workshop, um, the committee will be able to, um, present the recommendations through me, um, to the council. Uh, the expenditure plan, as you know, is made up of public safety at, oh, I can't see it's so small, um, one point eight million dollars approximately, which is eighty percent, neighborhood services at three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or fifteen percent of the budget, and fiscal stability at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And these numbers are based on annual figures. Um, the public safety breakdown, uh, forty-five percent of that is to maintain police patrols and this is where the seven officers would be hired from, this portion. Uh, ten percent is to protect and maintain nine-one-one response times and this is where the dispatcher would be hired from. That was discussed during, um, preparation for the measure. Um, fifteen percent goes to fire and that also would be used to hire, uh, two firefighters. Five percent is to keep public areas safe and clean and this is to improve code enforcement. And then five percent is for youth support and this is to add programming through recreation and public safety. The other portion, the fifteen percent, which goes to neighborhood services and the five percent to fiscal stability, oh, my presentation just went out. Anyway, that, um, the neighborhood services is three hundred and seventy-five thousand and that's for recreation activities and park maintenance. And the hundred and twenty-five thousand is for fiscal, um, stability, which is for financial and fund stability. So this is for the shortfall of anything, um, maybe that the other breakdowns can't handle.
Okay, why don't we just hold up just a minute?
Pause for a minute, okay.
Yeah. Let's take a, a break. Let's see if we can, uh, yeah.
Oh. Flash.
You got a flash. I don't juggle, so I can't.
Can I go back and forth? Oh.
There it goes.
Let me just try, there we go. Okay. I think it's my magic features that broke the, the equipment. We'll just move on to cash flow. So cash flow is one of the obviously major things that we'll be looking into when we're putting the expenditure plan together. And just so you know, like I mentioned, the collection will hopefully begin April first of this year. Um, but the way that the payments work, they're usually two months behind, um, schedule. So we won't get our first payment until June. And when we do receive that payment, that payment is based on an estimate, usually from the prior year, but obviously we don't have a prior year. Um, so my assumption is that they'll base it on, uh, the collections that we get for Measure P, given that it's the same type of, um, tax, it's a sales tax, it's an add-on tax, and it's for the same amount. So, um, the first two payments that we get will be estimate payments and then we receive what is called a true-up payment. And what that does is just, uh, reconciles the true payment from what they assume to what we, we've collected. So we should receive our first payment in June. However, the budget won't be effective until, until July first of two thousand and nineteen, so we won't be expending any funds until, uh, next fiscal year.
And, and we start collecting?
April first.
April first.
Mm-hmm. And so finally, accountability. Um, the government code requires that the revenues and expenditures of Measure H are tracked in a specific manner. And because of the tax that it is, that means that'll be through the general fund. We will have a specified activity code and if you notice in the budget, we have, um, a set of numbers and there's four groups of numbers. That third group of numbers is what we call, um, an activity code. And we'll, we'll, um, give that a special activity so we know that each expenditure that we're spending out of the different funds, it would be police, um, fire, recreation. They'll have the same activity code, so it'll be easy for us to track and report on. And then the annual performance report, as I previously mentioned, will, um, discuss the status of all revenues. So we'll go over the revenues that were collected, what we anticipated to bring in and are we meeting our goals? And then of course, the use of expenditures. The committee will be asked to review that report and then they will be asked to present any findings that they may have to counsel. And then finally transparency. All documents throughout this whole process for the entire fifteen years will be available online. And we will keep the tab that we had prior to the election that says Measure H and we will continue to put the documents on there so that the public is well aware of everything that is going on with that measure. So that's a brief overview and we hope to give you updates as we go along and as we make more progress, um, with what's happening. But right now, the biggest thing is getting the committee together so we could really start the progress and, or the process and discuss with them what, what staff's plans are. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I, I think you've answered the, the question that I heard throughout the campaign. And, and everyone said, well, that money goes into general fund. And I said, the general fund is the overall holding place of all the money. But if you wanted to see exactly where Measure H funds will go, they are not commingled, they are separated, so you will know exactly where every penny goes in Measure H.
That's correct. There'll be a separate line item for, for the revenue for Measure H and there will be separate line items for each and a, a specific activity code for each expenditure related to the measure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That was one of the things I wanted to clear up because there, you know, it, it just, it, it doesn't go into a general fund under a, uh, under a, a, a non-specific heading. And I, I think that's, I think what people wanted to hear.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be grouped with our general sales tax.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Are there any other questions on this presentation? Okay. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to item ten, consideration of approval of city council resolution number six oh three eight approving a list of regional street projects to be recommended, to be included in Measure V two thousand and nineteen implementation plan. Now we're gonna go to Director Faison.
I also have a PowerPoint, but I have a little background before that.
Okay.
Uh, the recommendation here is that we hope city council will approve resolution six zero three eight, which recommends which regional, so, projects the city of Los Banas, uh, are recommending to be in the Measure V two thousand and nineteen impleta, implementation plan. This is a recommendation to, um, to the MCAGB, the MCAGB board and also the regional board. So I'll give you a little background before we get into the actual presentation. This is the, uh, second time they've had, they've done one of these plans. The first one was in September two thousand and eighteen, uh, it was adopted, it was a two-year plan. It was over seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen. And the way the funds were worked at that time, eighty percent of the funds, the regional funds, were put in the pro, projects that were pay-as-you-go. In other words, they were ready to do, uh, very quickly within this timeframe. And twenty percent of the funds were set aside for future project leveraging for some of the bigger projects. And over those two-year periods, that's about five hundred thousand dollars a year is twenty percent put away. So that's put away for some of the bigger projects, which, uh, we seem to, uh, have big projects. And in that first two thousand and eighteen plan, uh, the state route one fifty-two regional path from Badger Pa, uh, Badger Flat to Los Banas Merced College Campus was approved for six hundred thousand dollars in that plan. And that would be, uh, hopefully with some other funding, we'd have enough money to do that plan. And now we come up to the slides. Now we're looking at, we're going into a two thousand and nineteen plan. At this point, as you see, uh, Westside Regional Project Funding, thirty-year total over the thirty-year time limit of this, uh, particular measure is seventy-seven million dollars, which amounts to a little over two and a half million dollars a year. Currently, I just pulled out, uh, uh, the numbers over the first five months of this recording year, because it records a little different than fiscal year, over the first five months, and the regional money is nineteen percent above projections. So the, it's doing very well. So, uh, we're ten, nineteen percent above the projection at the five-month stage of this year. So, um, so that's where we're going and that's what we're looking at is, is getting this simple, this new plan done. What we are proposing, what staff is presenting to you is, is five recommended projects for the, for the regional project list, the same as the original list we gave for the two thousand and eighteen. Uh, timelines have, have been revised slightly, moved ahead, of course, uh, not, uh, because we're already into the plan. And one project cost has been revised, which is the first one. And I will go over that as we get there. But as you can see, the first project is the regional path. Each one of these, each one of these has a slide that I can get more into. Uh, the second project is the Pioneer Widening Project. Uh, the third one is H Street Badger Flat Road to Overland Avenue Widening. The fourth one is Mercy Springs Road State Highway one sixty-five widening. And the state highway one fifty-two bypass is the last one. Anytime there's a question about any of these, please stop me because it's quite a bit of stuff. Uh, now we'll go project by project on this, uh, if it's okay. On the, uh, third slide, we have the reason, the Pacheco Boulevard, which is SR one fifty-two regional path. And this is the one that did receive six hundred thousand dollars in the first two-year segment, which we haven't spent yet, we're looking forward to doing it. Um, and this was supposed to be in line with ATP funding. Well, just today, we found out in cycle four, which is what we applied for, we did not get our ATP funding. So what you'll see here is there's actually two scenarios. One is a scenario one that's, that is listed as ATP funding and one is scenario one A, which is just regional money. ATP funding can be substituted for other funding. There is another cycle that's coming up, uh, in the summer of two thousand and twenty. We do, we do have a forensic on where we could do better on it. There is a possibility of a good possibility, we, we will look for more ATP funding. There is also other sources of funding we'll be looking for. I do have a meeting in the next couple of weeks with the, uh, transportation manager at MCAG to look at other funding sources. And then the second scenario is, uh, doing it all with, okay, doing it all with regional projects. I'm sorry.
Interesting. Yeah.
Sure.
Or the public stake and council stake, could you tell us what ATP represents?
Oh, okay, sure. Okay, sure. Look at my thing here. I put it, I always forget myself. And I did put it here. It's the Active Transportation Program. Sorry, I have so many acronyms. It's the Active Transportation Program. Lot of competition for these funds. I really thought we had a good application, it was disappointing we didn't get it, but we do know some areas we could increase by. You had to get a 90 to be in the, to get to the top layer, we were at 85. But we do have another scenario, we do have another cycle that's coming through. Actually, that cycle, if this project continues, we can get through the design and the environmental stage about the time, if we got that cycle money, that cycle money could go into right-of-way acquisition and construction. We have enough money to do the other two cycles, and that's the schedule we've been working for. And as I said, I will be meeting with the MCAG Transportation Manager to go over other options, which there are, there are other options. And one of the other options is the Scenario 1A, which is 100% out of the regional fund, which is a little bit of a hit, and it might be hard to do, but we should, we should go that direction, try that. It's a $2.2 million project, and the fund only gets $2.5 million a year. So, it probably would have to be extended over a couple of years, if we could get 100% funding besides the $600,000 we already have. But that's one area that we, we need to pursue. All these, all these recommendations go before the Westside Regional Committee, and then they prioritize what they see should be in the plan. And they're looking at, and then eventually, it will go to the Board, the MCAG Governing Board. And it hasn't been decided whether they'll be looking at a five-year window or a 10-year window yet. That will be the decision that those two bodies will determine at the time. So, that's, any questions on project number one? Project number two, that we, that was the same, same order as last time. Thank you very much. Is the Pioneer Widening Project. And just to let you know where we're at, we think this can be built within the next eight years, provided we get the funding in a very aggressive manner, which may, may not happen, we hope for. It's six and a half miles, it's about a $45 million estimated cost. I do see this project as being broken up in order to get this done, into, broken up probably into streets such as, instead of all the way to Ward, it would go to Place, which, because we have Place there, and go to Ortigalita. I mean, there's, there's gaps that we can do here to prevent, to reduce this cost a little bit. Where we're at with this project right now is, we applied, and it's the second time we applied, for a Caltrans planning grant for the Pioneer-specific plan, because this is a very, this is a very infant stage, this project. So, we need to get some planning done on it, and we have applied, and that was at the end of November, we applied for that. It's a $250,000 amount, of which $221,000 of it is the grant, and about $29,000 is local match or in-kind. We can use that money to go forward, to start studying it. But at the same time, we also have, this project is on the Regional Transportation Plan, and it is the only project that can use the RTIF rebate. If you remember, we got an RTIF rebate, we just sent a letter requesting it on December 20th. We got an RTIF rebate of $831,000 about. All that money can be designated for is this project, because this project is the one that appears on, on the last approved RTIF list. So, that money, plus the planning money, would get us pretty far along in getting this project through the planning stage. One of the issues that we will be dealing in on this one, we will compete for the RTIP, RTIP and the STIP, but not this cycle, because this cycle's due in November 2019. And one of the major things you need to get money, this size money, is you need a project study report or an equivalent. What an equivalent is, is if you're off the Caltrans right-of-way, it's just called an equivalent report. This is a little tricky, we intercept Caltrans right-of-way in two locations, so we probably will have to do the full PSR. If you do a PSR, which is a project study report, I should tell you what that is, I'm sorry, it's a very detailed project study report, and you don't have the environmental done yet, it's about a two and a half, two to two and a half-year process. If you have the environmental done, it can be about 18 months. So, in order to submit for some of this funding, and it's like the State Transportation Improvement Program, the RTIP and the STIP, which is where the big money is, you have to have this PSR done. So, what we're looking at is, with this planning money and this rebate from RTIF, we can, we can get this PSR, PSR done, and be in line to get in the next two-year cycle for the, for the bigger money, which is what we're trying to do to get. And it has to be, one thing in, in this, to get this kind of money, you have to be totally funded before it's programmed. So, we have to, we will have to definitely get the funding options available and put together for this. And that's why phasing is going to be necessary, because as we have figured out in the past, projects that are like $45 million are very hard to fully fund, and we don't want to get in the same boat we are before, when we can cut that into phases that we can, we can actually chomp on and chew and get it done, get something on the field. Is there any questions on this, on this project? I know it's, we're not, we're not stopping on this project at all, we're just kicking in the gear now, but we do have a PSR process we have to go through. Is that, no questions?
Okay.
Okay. The next projects are in the future, but we'll still go over them. One is the H Street, Badger Flat Road, Overland Avenue Widening. That's a very used street. It's a very good project, it's on the RTIP, it is multi-jurisdictional, it has a separated path, it's a good project. We think maybe within the next 13 years, we might be able to break ground on it. It's a four-mile project, it handles a lot of traffic from this city, heading over the pass. It's a very important project to get eventually, and it ties in really nicely with our pedestrian and bike path plan. It's a wonderful project for that also. The next project is project number four, and it is the Mercy Springs State Highway 165 Widening. And this goes from Pioneer North all the way to Henry Miller. And this is trying to get that road to a full ultimate build-out, and to have the right-of-way at least the same width as, in as many locations as we can do that, and at least have a nice transition in some areas. You know, it's kind of hodgepodge the way it is out there, so it'd be nice to have a full curb out there. So, that's in the future. And as you can see, that's 23 years, so that's pretty, that won't even hit the scope window of this, this plan at all, but we'd like to keep putting these on, because they're very big projects. And then, the next one is the State Highway 152 Bypass. Now, this is data uncertain, this is nearly nine and a half miles, and it always causes issues when I bring it up, but it's $450 million estimated cost. It is not on the RTIP, it's a Tier 2 project, which is a totally unfunded project. So, even though I just said it has to be on the RTIP to be on this plan, it's so far out, it wanted to make the plan anyway for time limit, but I want, it's a placeholder, that's what it is, it's a placeholder. And having it as just a placeholder with no funding options will not postpone or change any pending additional funding for the other projects I mentioned. It just will not do it. But I want to not make sure, I don't, it can't disappear off the screen totally, so we just keep it there as a non-funded Tier 2-type project. And what we're recommending is the City Council approves the resolution, which states the five projects recommended to be in the Measure V 2019 implementation plan. And this includes both Phase 1 and Phase 1A, or the two options on the bike path, pedestrian path to the college. And it's the same ones we approved, and I'd say it's a little over a year ago, I think we had the meeting, I think it was a time that we were meeting over at the County, Community Center, yeah, we had a nice turnout that time, and that's where we had that. But what I'd like to go from here is, while we're in transportation, I mean, this is the action I'd like to see happen tonight by the council, but while we're in transportation, let me give you a little update on some of the other items we are doing for transportation. The Measure V Local, this is the local funds that comes to us and we can use with no direction. It has to be on streets, of course. The local funding is $23 million total over, over the 30-year time period of this measure. That's about $789,000 a year approximately. Currently, in the, in the current year, in the first five months, we're 17% above the projection for that money, so we're doing well on that, too. And what you can see here is, this is, the first one was the K Street Storm Line, and we put ADA corner ramps in this, and that was done, this has been done, and that $250,000 was used, to let you know. The second project that comes up is the State Sidewalks Project, which is over by the hospital, between the hospital and the Little League Fields, it's in that area of the world. We are in design now on that project, so that is moving forward, I'm sorry. It's a good project, please don't do that. That is moving forward better than this is, and, and, and so, we let you know, we are going forward with that. Another, the next local project is, in the summer of 2019, we have all these projects that are listed here, we're going, we're in design now with them, we have already gotten a bid to design these projects. Now, what we have done is, and this is a kind of little update, too, sorry, I'm adding a lot of things in here, but this is kind of a tentative list of overlays for the summer of 2009. They're in design now, and depending on the cost of the design, will determine how many of these we can actually do this year. We think this is about what we can do. If it gets, if the design goes a little too expensive, then maybe one will have to drop off. But one thing that's very important about this, we did just buy a pavement management system through MCAG, was a joint effort, if you remember. We have that information on, we're learning how to use it, but just looking at the initial information, our street and how we have, how we're doing this, almost coincide 100%. So, what we have suggested to do, and what the new pavement management program has suggested to do, is almost step-by-step. We didn't see any reason to change at this moment. It did really well. And as, and the important thing about the new pavement management system, as we do a street and we do overlay on it, we put in there, you have, now you have a pavement management of 95%, it doesn't allow you to put 100%. And then, that, that will adjust that street up, and so, and then, you'll adjust through the years how, how maintenance is done on it. So, this is the rough list of the projects that are currently in design, and that's this year. And if you remember rightly, we were going to a construction of every two years, and the year in between, we were designing the projects. So, the next one was going to be summer of 2021, and here's a list of what we think we'll be able to do during that time. And so, in the, in 2020 is when we will design that. It's a lot of money to design, so. And we have the same thing on, in the summer of 2023, but what we're trying to do here is do some Cape Seals. And what Cape Seals are, if you know what a chip seal is, is you drive on the road and they put the chips down on the ground, and they actually kick, the chips kick up. This is one step above that, you put the chips down with the oil, and then you seal coat it smooth, so people aren't kicking the chips up. It does a lot of, it kind of does our fog seal plus our structure at the same time. It's more expensive, but it's better. And we're recommending doing this, because by the time the 2021 and the 2019 projects are done, we'll have most of the overlays, we hope, will be done. Now, there could be a street that comes up in this time period, it's quite, quite a few years, could be a street that comes up and kicks in here, and we'll have to add an overlay in here, and maybe take a couple of Cape Seals off.
Mark?
Yes.
What was the, the name of the seal that was done on I Street between 5th and 7th?
When was it done?
Oh, God, 10 years ago.
That was an overlay.
Huh?
That was actually an overlay, I believe.
That was an, that was just a...
No, I believe it was a skim overlay.
A skim, yeah.
Because they cut the corners and they skimmed right over and did a small overlay. And that was, I think, with that original, what, Prop 1 money or something? A long time ago.
I mean, it wasn't a, you know, an actual roll-on, it was just a, yeah.
That street was in good enough shape, all we had to do was a little tiny repair, and it wasn't over there, but it was a thin overlay.
Well, my point is, it's held up.
Yes.
Really well. So, is that a step above what the chip seal is?
It's a step above the Cape Seal, yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Definitely. And you know, I'll be, why that street is, holds up so well, it has a wonderful base. When you don't see a lot of structural failures, failures in the asphalt, it's usually because of the base.
Okay.
Let's see. So, in the expenditure summary, you can see some of the projects that we have done here, and what we're planning on doing. And over the, through 2024, we have a total of about $3.8 million of unrestricted and $1.6 million of alternative money of the Measure V Local. If you remember, the alternative money was sidewalks and different things besides roads. The, so, it's the sidewalks, the handicap ramps, other alternative modes of transportation, which is walking, biking. So, we had to spend so much money, and I believe it's a 20% number, we had to spend on alternative, which we have no problem doing, we're gonna, we're gonna do that with no problem whatsoever, so. So, as you can see here, when you look at the revenue, and this is, this is a little play on words, it's going to be close, we're going to do it no matter what, we're showing in balance of 2024 of only about $35,000 remaining of Measure V Local. We're not going to overspend the Measure V Local, so this is, shows that. We do have gas tax money, too, that we can stick in here to make us a couple of shortfalls if we need to do it, so. But that just shows what we're planning on doing. The last slide, you guys are probably super glad about that, but is other transportation projects that we have funded, or are funding in the future. Place Road Rehabilitation is on there, and that's for the local transportation funds. This is, and if you go out there, Place Roads actually will be coming to you, I believe, in the next couple of council meetings for final. If you, this is a funding source that almost 100% every year goes to transit, goes to your bus system, your unmet, your unmet needs. This year, I mean, two years ago, when we got, we actually had some leftover money, and they put it into other transportation needs. So, it's not a source that you can depend on, but since we had it, we used it for that project out there. We also have a CMAC grant that we already have for $360,000. We're right now in the consultant RFP phase of that, which actually does take a while. We, Caltrans has very strict requirements on your design engineers, and that's adding sidewalks to six locations. The annual street budget, that's at SB 1 money, that's to help supplement the gas tax money that has been slowly been taken away, so your SB 1 money is in your annual street budget, which is your seals, your overlay, some of your crack filling, some of your cold asphalt that we are doing, which is when you see streets like 10th and 9th. If you see those, we did that little sections of 10th, I think we did a little cold sealing over in the state section, too. And that's just when our crews go out there without the very hot mix. It doesn't last as long, but it's, it's a very cost-effective system to do. Definitely better than the seal coats and that type of stuff. We also have 300 street corner ADA upgrades, and that's through gas tax, and that's every year, we do, we do a few of these, it's mandatory, we do them, we should be doing them anyway, but it's mandatory, we show progress in ADA to do those. And we do, we're looking at doing the rest of our street-like LED retrofits. We had, we did some, we did about 800 of them out of 2,500, we did that, and we're paying that back with a rebate, the change in the savings in the energy, we're giving that back to PG&E. There might be such an issue that we can do that with the remaining ones and do the same process without having that paid off, and we're looking into that now. And that's just a little bit of the, where we're at with the transportation projects. But tonight's item is, I would like that resolution to be approved, so we can forward this with your recommendation to the Measure V 2019 implementation plan, and then, your, the council's representative on the regional, on the Westside Regional Project can present these, this list to that group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council this time? Okay, well, now we'll open up the public hearing on Resolution Number 6038. Is there anyone who's wishing to speak? Oh, it isn't saying? It shows it in the recommendation. Okay.
Actually, the resolution quotes a public hearing that was held previously a year ago, when we presented the same projects. It's, it wasn't this one.
Okay, well, since I invited you, is there anyone wishing to speak on this? Okay, I will now close that, that portion, public hearing, that wasn't supposed to take place. And I'll bring it back to council level for a vote. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
Thank you, Mayor. Before my motion, I'd like to commend the city engineer for a very comprehensive and realistic plan, and it's showing in the town. We're seeing our streets get fixed, and in a methodical and effective manner, and I'm very pleased to see it. So, I'm very pleased to move to approve City Council Resolution Number 6038, as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6038, is read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
Carried. Item number 11, Appointment of Commissions to the Following City Commission. Planning Commission, one unexpired term, expiring December 31st, 2019, and four two-year terms, expiring December 31st, 2020. And at this time, I'd like to bring four names forward for the appointment of a two-year term, and they are Stephanie Stock, Mona... term, and they are Stephanie Stock, Mona Giuliani, Susan Toscano, and David Dees. And that is my motion. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. Motion, why don't you, here, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead and say that again.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so it's been motioned by the mayor for those four names, and within my motion, I am also asking for an advertisement of the one, one position for one year to expire on December 31, 2019. And I have a second, do I still have a second by Mrs. Lewis?
No, second.
Okay, second by Mrs. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item 12, Advisement of Public Notices, and there's no report. Let's go on to item 13, City Manager's Report. Go away. Wait a minute, let me get this for you, Alex. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to report that on December 28, based upon my performance review, Finance Director's salary was increased to $11,097 monthly, $133,164 annually, retroactive to August 16, 2018. Again, that's executive compensation report pursuant to the government code. Also want to report that we will be having a public meeting on our new police station. Want to invite members of the community to come, provide your comments, hear about our new police station, we're in the process of designing. Want to include the community in that process, a very important civic building we're moving forward with, and we really want your input. That meeting is on Thursday, January 10, 6 to 8 p.m. at the Community Center Lounge, so please come and join us. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Is that on our?
Thursday, January, Thursday, January 10, 2019. It's on the website, we'll make sure and put it on the rolling bulletin board, electronic bulletin board. 6 to 8 p.m. That's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 14, City Council Member Reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Jones.
Just want to wish everybody a happy new year.
Hang on, let's get that. There you go.
Just want to wish everybody a happy new year. Next city council meeting, I will be absent, if Lucy can confirm that, for the League of Cities, for new mayors and councilmen, so I will not be here, unfortunately, but wish everybody the best.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd also like to wish everyone a happy new year and hope everyone was safe. I do have one request for council. We had a resolution that was passed some time ago, Resolution Number 5523, and this is in regards to the invocation for our city council. And item number eight on limit on same speakers, at this particular time, the city, as a result of this resolution, only allows a clergy or a member of their church to come three times a year and not on consecutive meetings, three times in a calendar year. So we've had some issues finding clergy, because most churches have their Bible study on Wednesday night or other activities. And I'm requesting that the council reconsider this and actually consider changing it from three times a year to maybe four or five times a year to allow clergy to come, but not consecutively, but, you know, within the year. I think it's important, while we still have the right here in our city, to have an invocation at our city council. So I would like to request the council at our next meeting to bring this forward through the city manager, to have it on the agenda, to look at whether the council wants to approve moving this to have four or five times a year that a pastor or one of their members can come and offer the invocation at our council meeting.
That will be a council member request for the 16th of January?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I have no other report.
Thank you. Mr. Freya?
All I have tonight is happy new year, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. And Mrs. Santos is not here, we wish her well, hope she gets well fast. And just a couple of things, happy new year to everyone, safe 2019, safe new year. And for the last two nights, the warming shelter has been opened at the Mill and Lux. And so if you know of anyone, it will be open tonight, please tell them to come by. It will be closing on Thursday, and the only time it opens is when we have a, well, I can, can you just give us a quick rundown of why we opened that, so we know?
Anytime we have a cold spell, that's 32 degrees or less over three consecutive days, then we open the warming shelter. The first day was just barely at that, so we decided to go ahead, because two days we're going to be under 32 degrees to open it up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, so I'm glad it's open, thank you for the individuals who are staffing it, and it's a, it's something that was needed, and the city had provided it, so thank you so much. So with that, I am going to now read item 15, Closed Session, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Agency Designated Representative, City Council, City Manager Terazas, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufo, Employee Organizations, Los Angeles Police Office Association, LBPOA, Los Angeles Police Dispatchers, Community Service Officers Association, LBPDCSOA, and Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And item B, Public Employee Annual Performance Evaluation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Title: City Manager. And if there's any report, thing to report out, we will do so after Closed Session. Other than that, thank you and have a nice evening. Okay.